Please rise, we'll invite Eric Bogrood for the indication. Cornerstone Church.
Say a word of prayer with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your love and your kindness to us. Lord, as we think about this changing of seasons, we're reminded of your faithfulness. We thank you for the many beautiful seasons that we have in Fergus Falls, the many blessings that you have poured out on us. As we think of unrest in other parts of the world, we thank you for the relative peace that we have had here, while at the same time praying for peace in other places. Lord, we pray for your blessings on this meeting. As usual, I ask for wisdom and good hearts to be willing to agree and communicate well tonight. For your glory, Lord, we ask this, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this April 4th, 5:30 City Council Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Like to look at item number C for the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions to the agenda this evening?
Yeah, Your Honor, councilmembers, I do have one addition this evening, and if you're all okay with it, I'd like to add it to the consent agenda, and that's a resolution authorizing staff to enter into a contract with Shenahan Companies for an appraisal of the dairy property. There's a memo on your desks to that end. And then Councilmember Kwame asked that we remove item number 10 from the consent agenda for a little bit of discussion.
We have a motion to offer.
I'd like that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Hold on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Poll, same sign. Motion is carried. Item D, under public hearings, we have a public hearing tonight for housing tax rebate at 1382 Lenora Way, and... If there's something to do...
Clara, sure.
Clara, if you could give us an update on that, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Mayor and Council. Yes, we have a public hearing tonight for a tax rebate application for a Robert Nordick, who is building a house on Lenora Way. This fits in with the tax rebate program that we've been supporting for the last couple of years. I think we will probably start to see another flurry of applications as the building season gets underway, and this is just a reminder, a nice program to incentivize the building of new houses in town. So if you've got any questions about the program or about this project in particular, feel free to ask.
So with that, I'd like to open the hearing. If you'd have anything to state regarding this tax rebate, please come up to the podium, state your name, your address, and your comments. I'd like to open the hearing. Hearing none and seeing none, I'll close that hearing for the council to take action.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Second, Your Honor.
Mr. Ruffer. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries. Item E, awarding of bids. We have a public improvement 9349, the airport runway taxiway and apron crack fill joint repairs that Brian will give us an update on.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, members of the council. Yes, on March 29th, we opened bids electronically for this project. We received a total of three bids. National Sealant Concrete submitted the lowest bid in the amount of $320,918. Our engineers estimate was $270,000. We then, S.H. and myself, we opened the bids and determined everything was in good order from National Sealant and deemed responsive. Similar to past airport projects, you know, we got the construction costs. We'll be also requesting acting on S.H.'s professional service proposal, but we'll package all these known costs up then, and looking to submit for a state and federal grant. The application is due April 11th of 2022. Just to go over some of the budgetary, this is kind of a unique project in itself, just in regards to funding ratios. We've done similar projects in this. I don't want to get into too much detail, if you'd like, but just in general, it's just that this, we broke this bid project up into two bidding packages, Schedule A, Schedule B, and that was predicated on the funding ratios for that. For example, federally eligible projects or portions of the projects will be funded at a 90% ratio, five local, five state. Other areas that the feds won't participate in, that ratio is a 70/30 split between the state and their local. So on the back sheet, I included the budget, it kind of has that funding matrix, but of the total project, estimated project cost about $385,918. The federal share were estimated about $318,000. Mid-dog share between their 5% and the 70% for the non-eligible items, estimated about $40,300, and our local share, $27,400. And I do have an exhibit kind of somewhat to show the detail of those funding authorizations. Based on the budget, the city of Fergus Falls has $300,000 of federal entitlement dollars to proceed with this project. Due to, we have a little bit projected funding shortfall, therefore we contacted Airport, an airport, Walker Municipal Airport, and they have acknowledged that they do have, they will loan us their $50,000 in entitlement transfer to the city of Fergus Falls. Keep in mind, we have done this before in the past, and it's a great way for our local municipalities to exchange funds when shortfalls like this come about. So, to recap, I'd just like to, I'm looking for four recommendations. Award the construction services contract to National Sealant and Concrete in the amount of $320,918, and this is contingent on a federal and state grant offer that will be brought back to the council. Second item, accept S.H.'s professional service proposal for construction administration in the amount of $40,400. Thirdly, authorize myself to submit a state and federal grant offer for this project. And the fourth and final authorization to facilitate an EIP transfer from Walker Municipal Airport to the city of Fergus Falls in the amount of $50,000. And I'll open up to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brian.
Are we able to do that with one resolution?
I believe so.
Okay, I would offer it.
Thank you, Mr. Fish.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffer. Any other discussion on those four items? That'll take roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Item number F is petitions and communications. I don't believe we have any of those in front of us this evening. Go to the consent agenda. Again, item number 13 was added on for the appraisal of the dairy, and we removed item number 10 that we will discuss. Anything, somebody have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Mrs. Second. Anything else to come before us? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call. Roll call, please.
He's new.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Item then number 10 we had removed was resolution canceling the purchase agreement with Rivers Edge Denta LLC for the city-owned parking lot adjacent to the former ShopCo, and Clara is going to give us an update on that.
Yes, so this has been another ongoing saga with us here at the city. ShopCo site was purchased by Rivers Edge Investment back in 2020, and part of their goal for redevelopment was to also use the city-owned parking lot that is adjacent to the ShopCo site. So we had entered into a purchase agreement with them for that site, had since extended it. The economic uncertainties unfortunately have made it seem like the project is not feasible for them at this time, so the agreement itself would be expiring on May 1st, so we are simply going into this with eyes wide open, both sides saying, we know that this isn't going to happen right now, so we're just going to break this agreement. They will still remain, they're still really interested in trying to see something happen on that site, they just don't know what that could look like. So the city is not making any like grand moves to do anything with that parking lot at this time. We're just simply saying, this project isn't the one that's going to move forward right now, but we're open for what could come.
Thank you, Clara, for the update. With that, Mr. Kwame, do you want to offer a motion?
I would accept this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Kwame, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any other discussion on that item? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Item approved. H, ordinance and resolutions. We have a first reading of ordinance 26, 8th series, amending City Code Section 32.28, Chapter 113 and Section 32.26, 35.57, 52.19, excuse me, and 53.05. Would somebody like to introduce that first reading?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista. Item number two, we have a second reading, ordinance 21, 8th series, amending the zoning map from I-2 to B-3, as requested by the flower mill and Kevin Pertram.
Second reading.
Do we have a second?
We just need a roll call.
Sorry.
Yeah, I got a question. Do we know what the timing is on when anything may or may not happen? I mean, obviously, we're kind of going through the process of the ordinance changes.
Thank you. Yes, so as a result of the zoning change to B-3, if that is approved tonight, the applicant has also applied for a conditional use permit for the hotel, which would have its public hearing at the next planning commission meeting, which is April 25th, and then the hotel ordinance would have been in effect 15 days from, that was approved at the last council meeting, so whatever that Saturday was, and I think that's coming up probably the next two weeks or so. So we're on track for things to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, roll call.
Yes.
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 That item is approved. Item number three, resolution approving development agreement between the city of Fergus Falls and Prairie View Development LLC.
Thank you. Within your packet, you do have a copy of that development agreement, and I put just a little summary memo together. So the development we're talking about is up by the Regional Treatment Center. You can see a map up on the screen, and on North Park Street, you will notice that construction has started on a couple of the twin home units. So I'll probably just walk over and show you the kind of the flow that's looking to be, starting here, heading north, then construction will come back down, and then head back north. So that's what's laid out in the development agreement. Now, the city's participation in this is, one, you as a city council already established a TIF district, TIF number 414 for this, and that tax increment is going to be used to cover the infrastructure, so putting in the streets, the sidewalks, the sewer, water, stormwater services, and the mains. And then we're going to issue tax increment bonds to finance this project, the infrastructure of it, not the housing, but the city's infrastructure that we own, and we're also levying special assessments to cover 100% of that as also security for those bonds. But the intent is to use the tax increment that is collected, so you can see it's bare land now, you build improvements on it, you create that taxable value, then the city's able to take that increased taxes that we didn't have before and use that to make those bond payments. So that's what's in the development agreement, stating that the developer will build this out over six years. So the next action item on the council tonight is dealing with the special assessments. Once those are adopted, they will be deferred, and then they will come on in stages over six years as those houses are built. And then the last leg of it also would be 10 rental units, so we're looking at 36 units of owner-occupied housing, so 18 twin homes, and then 10 rental townhome units. They'll be very similar to that, it'll just be 10 in a row of townhomes, basically, that the developer will continue to own. Special assessments on this, what we're going to, mechanically, how we do that is, we will receive the TIF here at the city from the county, so everyone will pay their taxes as normal as their houses are built, and then we will capture that TIF, that will come here, we'll calculate, do we have enough TIF to make the bond payments on that? If we do that for that year, then we can go ahead and cancel that assessment payment for that year. Now, if there was a shortfall, if there wasn't quite enough TIF, we could still send out then a special assessment bill for something, you know, to make up that balance. This whole structure is built out that the tax increment will cover that, but of course, we don't know if tax laws changes or valuations, you know, right now, they're just estimates, so once they're actually built. So just want to be clear about that. We're doing both TIF and specials with the intent to cancel those special assessments when those TIF come in. Also, the people that purchase those owner-occupied units have to meet income thresholds, they can't have too high of an income to qualify, so if their income is over that, then that parcel would have to be removed from the district, and we would come back to you at that time if that ever were to take place, and then the special assessments would be active on those, because they wouldn't be part of the TIF district. The owners would then have to pay the special assessments, thus the city giving the money to pay the bonds for this. So the two sources are the TIF and the special assessments. Think if I'm missing anything here, but the development agreement is between the city of Fergus Falls and Prairie View Development, so that is the developer. We've been working for a long time getting this all together. I think we have a very good agreement here, and it's, we have good security for the city as well, between the TIF and then the special assessments as well. So any questions? Or Clara, or Andrew, anything I forgot to mention that I'm missing?
Thank you, Bill, for that recapture. Anybody like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer it, Your Honor.
Mr. Hicks and Mr. Thompson, second, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Items approved, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Item number four, we have a resolution adopting the final cost assessment for public improvement 5958 for Campus View Estates Development. And Brian, you taking that one? Everybody's getting a chance tonight.
Yes, Your Honor, March 21st, we did have to open the public hearing for public improvement 5958. This was the final cost hearing in regards to this development. I just want to note, throughout the development agreement process and everything, there was a change to the interest rate. As proposed, it was initially 4.5% on March 21st. It is now going to be revised to a 5%. We have consulted our attorneys, and the developer, the petitioner, has acknowledged the 5% change, and we've also memorialized this in a way or two as well. Everything seems to be in good standing, so at this time, I'm requesting adoption. The final assessment rolls for public improvement 5958.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions, or we have somebody to offer that?
I'll offer that.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Mr. Fish. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Is approved. Item number...
Mr. Justin? Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, go ahead.
If we could just back up one notch, I thought of something after we voted on the number three, that I think is just a brief question. Bill, you explained that on the income limits for the property, if someone went, was over that limit, then the specials would come back to that person directly, they'd be removed from the TIF. So it in no way limits who can buy a property. I mean, to say that there's a limit makes it sound like, you know, if you're above this threshold, you don't, you can't buy it, but that wouldn't be that case, it would just change the term so that then that purchaser would be, would have to pay the special assessments, correct?
Correct. Yep. Because in order for you to have a TIF district, it's all based on, you know, having affordable housing, and that's the whole goal.
Right.
But, so yeah, if you're not an eligible purchaser, then we have to remove it from the district, but then that means those special assessments stay in effect, and then we'll build them out annually. So in other words, if someone wants to buy it, and is willing to pay those special assessments regardless of their income level, then they can certainly buy the house.
Sure.
Yep.
And it seems to me that there was a breakdown in that whole TIF detail that said 80% had to be below a certain threshold, and 50% at another threshold, so there were some other breakdowns in there, correct?
Yep, good you bring that up. So on the rental side of it, so those 10 homes that'll be built with the last grouping of six units of owner-occupied, those then, the renters, there's income limits there as well, and those are in the development agreement, and I think 20% of the units have to fall within 50% of, is it the median income for Ottertail County? Okay. So that's where those calculations come in, and then, yeah, it's like 115% of the median income for purchasing the home.
And then... With the houses that are available for purchase, there's also a percentage, and I forget what the percentage is, that can, that don't have to fit that income requirement and can still remain quote-unquote "in the TIF district."
Yep, and it amounts to being one home out of that because of the percentage. However, we aren't going to know that till the end when it's built out, so if this happens in this coming year, we will have to pull that out, because we don't know how this has all played out, but if you get to the end, you could kind of get a gimme on one.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good information, thank you. I'm sure we'll all retain that. Item number five, resolution accepting StanTech's professional service agreement for public improvement 9508, which is the RTC Phase 3 design in the amount of $141,600, and ordering the project plans and specifications, and I think representatives from StanTech is here, Bruce, to answer any questions, and if Brian wants to, either one of you kick us off. Sorry.
Good evening, Your Honor and City Councilmembers. Submitted a proposal dated March 11th to do exterior restoration on Building 1, which would include constructing a new stair on the south side of the building to try and match as closely as possible the original stair that was there, remove the wall and the arched windows where the front entrance used to be. And then the windows, at some point in the past, they replaced the windows on the first level with aluminum, and the anodizing has failed on those, and they look pretty bad. The rest of the windows are wood, and the majority of them are single pane, so the intent with this project would be to replace all of the windows to restore them back to historic profiles on the window frames and sashes for the entire building, and then as part of the initial project would be to do a mold survey in the building to determine if there are any organic materials that are promoting mold growth. I don't think there's a whole lot, just because the building has been dehumidified for the entire time that it's been shut down, but we want to do the survey to do due diligence to make sure that we're not, we've got a good indoor air quality before we move forward with installing a new mechanical system for ventilating the entire building as part of the project as well. The other part of it would be basically sealing, there's four door openings that go from Building 1 into the connecting links on the north side of the building. All four of those openings would be sealed so that we keep the good indoor air quality once it's been cleaned and ready for a new ventilation system, to not be pulling air in from the rest of the campus. That is not really good air. People are not permitted to go into that, the rest of the campus right now without having respirators and appropriate gear to protect themselves. We would also be planning on removing the wood stair and the door on the east side of the building that was installed back when we did Phase 1 demolition, took down the administration building, and then that wall, the brick that was installed was temporary. We would take all of that temporary brick out, do new custom brick, that's shape and color to match the existing brick on the building to get that fully restored to what it looked like originally. With all of this work, because we're sealing the doors going into the rest of the campus, the building can't be occupied, because we only have the front entrance. We don't have a second means of egress out of that building without doing additional construction. So that's, that's kind of the, the one question that I have is, you know, is that acceptable? Or do we need to look further at how do we make the building accessible and still meet the code of having two means of egress out of the building while maintaining an indoor air quality that allows people to be inside?
Thank you for that update. I know there were some questions from Mr. Kwame from Committee of the Whole, but I'll maybe refer to you, Bill, first, and then we can get to any questions that council has.
I'm just going to think outside, outside a little bit here. Talking about stairs and then like that custom brick, we'd have to make sure that that would qualify under the legislation for building envelope and stabilization, right? Because I think if it's already bricked up, custom brick and kind of make it more historic, it may not qualify, because we're allowed to use it for stabilization and the building envelope, but that's something we definitely want to check on.
Correct. Yep.
And the stairs, too, if that...
Right.
I don't know if that would qualify, so...
Right. And, yeah, and I, you're right, we do need to check and confirm the language of the legislation on whether or not they'll allow us to construct a stair and do that with brick that matches the rest of the building. I don't think, I would, I would not recommend building the stair unless we're going to have custom brick fabricated that matches the rest of the building.
I'll be quiet now.
Very good question.
The way it stands, I will be voting no against this, other than sealing up the buildings, sealing up the windows, the main floor windows and the ground floor windows to keep the people out for the liability issues with the city. I do not, I just, pretty much just want to get this building sealed up, and that way it doesn't continue to get any worse, you know, look at the downspouts, look at the mold and stuff like that, but we don't know what's going to happen with these buildings, and the more money we put into it, not knowing that, you know, they, except for the tower, you know, this stuff could all still come down, and I'm not willing to spend money just because we have it. So other than sealing the building up, I won't be voting in favor of this.
Thanks for sharing. Mr. Ruffer?
Question on Councilmember Thompson's point, is this, is this money that could be used for anything else, or is this kind of what this money's for?
Can only be used on the building, and right now, the way it's written, no demolition of the horseshoe building is what's currently in legislation, so it's only, can be used for building envelope and stabilization, basically.
So we're, you know, we're minimizing the amount of the building that we're working on, and the money can't be used for anything else, so it's either we use it or lose it, basically? So we might as well.
If we didn't use it, yeah, it would expire with the state.
Yeah.
And was that date June of 2023?
I think June of 23.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Brent, I mean, I, I just don't see a feasible reuse, and, you know, my position on the RTC is pretty well-known, but if it's money that's, that we're going to lose if we don't use it, we might as well do something with it, the way I see it.
I just look at the fact is, if we turn around and spend it, and we have to start taking things down, the state's going to look, you know, I feel the state's going to look at us and say, hey, we gave you this money, you put it into this, now you're taking it down, it's going to look less favorable when we go back to try to get more money from them to tear down the rest of the buildings if need be. I hope we don't have to tear them down. I hope a developer comes in, that's why I'm willing to seal up the windows, keep the liability down, and seal the roof up, because then that way the developer is responsible, because we could do one thing, one thing, one way, and he decides, well, no, that's not how I want it done for this, and then we just put a bunch of money into something that's...
that's going to get tore out. And I just think it's going to look more favorable with the state if we just do the minimal amount that we need to do and see what happens in the future.
Thanks for the comments.
Your Honor, can we just clarify one thing? Are we just talking about the tower? Or is this, are we talking about, so this scope of work is just purely on the tower?
Correct. Yep. We did submit a proposal that looked at going through and, and basically cleaning up all of the ground floor windows, getting them sealed up and covered to try and prevent moisture coming into the ground floor all the way around the horseshoe. And then discussed doing some security systems, either external or internal, for the entire campus from, you know, building twenty-three to building twenty-seven, and including building one. And then in discussions with Brian, we shrank that down to just looking at building one. And a lot of that was kind of based on the conversations that the city's currently having with the school district about school district potentially acquiring the property and building a new school there to, in some manner, incorporate building one into the new building.
Good point of clarification, Mr. Hicks. That's duly noted. Scott, you had some questions from Committee of the Whole. Do you want to...
Yeah. Well, first of all, Andrew, maybe you could clarify the word that you received from the school as far as their interest in the property and the building.
Yeah, happy to, Your Honor, Councilmember Kwame. And Bruce probably hasn't even heard this. So he's maybe learning as we go here. But late in the day last Tuesday, I had received correspondence from the superintendent of schools that they determined using the tower related to the entrance of a potential future school is not feasible. So at the Committee of the Whole last Wednesday, the tone of the discussion was essentially, you know, both of these options are on the table, whether we want to focus on building one as, as the conversation has focused on this evening, or if we want to go back to that previous proposal that Bruce had prepared to cover more of the buildings and get that sealed up. So both of those options are on the table, and we're just looking for direction from the council as to how they wish to proceed. And I think Bruce can be flexible enough to, to guide us down either direction.
Absolutely.
Okay. So given that the school is not interested in any of the building, and given that demolition is not on the table, and has been specifically ruled out by SHPO and our master plan, it seems that our decision here is not to do this plan or some smaller version of this plan to work on building one, but to do this plan or the original decision or the original list of things that included from three to twenty-seven with the roofs and the windows and all of that that we looked at a couple of months ago. If I understand it right, for us to go forward with that original plan, we would still need you to give us a breakdown of the costs and stuff so that we could approve it and go forward. Or has that, a list of prices and stuff, all been prepared that we could actually move forward on that? I didn't think we were at the point of being able to move forward on that because when we were about to, we got sidelined by this school deal. So I don't think we're ready to go forward with voting on that option because I don't think we've got the numbers from you yet, or maybe I'm wrong.
I think we do. We'd have to revisit it, though.
Yeah, I can, I can take another look. I'm pretty sure we do, we did, we did submit a proposal for looking at all the buildings that currently remain, along with estimated costs for each of the buildings, kind of with a, with a list of, you know, of basically just doing the exterior at the windows, and then repairing the roofs on twenty-three, twenty, and twenty-seven, and then some alternates of getting some mechanical ventilation in the buildings to get some air moving and try and get the indoor air quality, if not completely cleaned up, to at least get some air moving to stop the deterioration on the interior. So.
But we wouldn't be able to approve that list tonight. We, you'd need a couple of weeks for our next meeting before we'd be able to do that. Brian?
Could recommend one, just so we can recap
Yep.
where we've been starting, and just so everybody's on the same page.
And I think that makes sense. And again, we've got to make the June date. But there's time to do that still. You know, we're not, it's not like it has to happen by tonight.
Correct.
So with that in mind, it seems like the proper thing for us to do would be to vote down this resolution since we can't practically go forward with this and have it make any sense.
Right.
And then look to have a new resolution with the original list of the, all the windows, roofs, everything from three to twenty-seven, come back to us for a vote in the future. Correct? There's more I could say about this, but I don't know that it's necessary at this point. But if there was, if there was a general feeling that the council understood that we could just vote no on this and look for a new resolution to come in a couple of weeks, I'd be happy to do that. But if I need to defend that position any further, I'm armed. So just let me know.
Go ahead, Mr. Hicks.
I think, I think I would only be really interested in looking at the tower. I, I mean, you know, one of the, kind of the things that the school quoted was, you know, that it was a hundred and fifty dollars estimated square foot for just restoration and a hundred and fifty dollars per square foot for mechanical. There's four hundred thousand square feet at the RTC, so that's a development project of a hundred and twenty million dollars. I just think that's a tall order for Fergus Falls, as we said today, to find somebody that's going to put a hundred and twenty million dollars into that. Obviously, the tax credits are in the state at this point in time, and there's some kind of, obviously, discussion about whether they're going to maintain the tax credits. And certainly, without tax credits, this, this project would never, never take place. And I would agree with Councilmember Thompson that I think we just do the minimum. Just because we have the money from the state doesn't mean to say that we should spend it. We have a fiduciary responsibility to not just the citizens of Fergus Falls, but also, you know, to every taxpayer. It's still taxpayer money that we're spending. And I think, you know, we, we want to keep the tower, and I think putting the money into the tower is the best use of the funds. Spreading it out over the rest of the buildings, in my opinion, is, is a waste at this point in time. We don't have anything concrete, you know. And I think, you know, the, the school's looked at it, and that's their estimate, and that's in today's dollars, and nothing is getting cheaper today.
Thank you for that. It sounds like we, we do have a recommendation or a resolution before us. Nobody's put it on the table, but I guess it's up to the council whether we put it for a vote tonight, or we have it come back before the council at a later date.
I mean, I, I mean, I would hate to put people through, you know, more work and to update quotes because that's painful at the best of times. And, I mean, I think that, for me, I will vote for, you know, restoration of the tower, but I'm not going to vote for restoration of any of the other places. So, you know, if it comes back in two weeks and they've got, obviously, updated bids, I'm going to vote no for it at that time anyway.
I'm, I'm agreement with Anthony to a point. The remainder of the buildings, I'm willing to put the minimal money just to keep the elements out. The minimal patching on the roofs, just sealing up the windows, and for liability issues, sealing up all the main floor and ground floor windows. Because I was told at one point, you know, once you seal those up, there's no need for a security system, let alone somebody who's going to monitor it all the time. If we can just keep the people out, keep the risk down, and then just keep them, you know, keep the weather out of it, I think it'll last quite a bit longer until we decide, you know, whether or not it's, a developer wants it. And if he doesn't, then, you know, it'll have to come down, minus the tower.
So from what, from what I'm hearing is, we might have somewhere in the middle of that conversation between voting tonight and, you know, full scale, spend all the money we have. Maybe we need to see that a la carte list, and we can pick off, you know, making sure the liabilities are taken care of, things are sealed off, and we don't have all that info tonight. And that may also obviously adjust the contract that you guys would charge, obviously. So
Absolutely. Yep.
If everybody's in agreement, I think, and/or I'd say, rather than have you come to another meeting, I think if we have any questions that we need answered, get them done tonight, and just come back before the Committee of the Whole, and then at our next council meeting and save you another trip. Is that fair? Does anybody have any, I mean, the one question you had had was, that you need to know was, was something about the entry access?
Point of egress and that, but...
Right.
Right. If, if we're only going to look at doing work on building one, and that includes doing a mold survey to try and clean up the indoor air quality to the point where putting a mechanical ventilation system in will support maintaining a clean indoor air quality, then we have to seal the doors that go into the rest of the campus to make sure that we're not pulling any air in that hasn't been abated properly. That, that means that there's only one way in and out of the building. And right now, it's up to the side stair on the east side of the building. So.
Okay. I think the cleanest path forward would be somebody making a resolution, accepting this in a second, that would get voted down. And then somebody would make a motion directing staff to work with StanTech for the second part of that.
Correct.
Everybody clear on that?
Say that again, no?
I think the best order of business would be a first and a second on this resolution. That resolution would fail.
Okay.
And then we'd need somebody to make a motion directing staff to work with StanTech to come back with the full envelope, a la carte style, where then we review that at Committee of the Whole, and then have it at our next council meeting for action.
The other way it would fail is that if someone made a motion and it wasn't second. So two ways to do it, if that's what you wish to do.
Very good.
Duly noted.
Ralph, I'm not, do we even need to defeat this resolution since it's not on the table? I think somebody could just make a motion to the effect of what you're suggesting, and then there will be no record of this resolution being before the City Council.
That's fine.
I'll make a motion, we leave it on the table.
Okay.
So just everybody's clear? Because I'm, I'm not now.
You're directing us to bring back what you just stated.
He said motion on the table, and I...
Yeah, he's placed it on the table. The table will come back at a, at a future meeting.
At a, at a...
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Everybody clear on that? We're tailing this motion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign? Motion is carried. Thank you, Bruce.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Justin?
Yes.
Could I make one comment just to, so people understand how this could play out down the line?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
The conversation about demolition keeps coming up, and I need to make the point that that is not on the table. The master plan does not include any demolition. And I want to read a portion of an email that I received from SHPO after they learned that the school was considering demolition. It says, "If this proposal moves forward and other sections of the Cookby Building are demolished, I'm certain that the entire site would be delisted from the National Register of Historic Places. That is an important consideration because the National Register Historic District includes the other individual buildings that comprise the larger State Hospital site, several of which have been rehabilitated using historic tax credits. Removing the property from the National Register would include delisting those individual buildings, which could impact the ability of that owner to claim the credits." So the specific application in this case that is most recent is the Nurses Cottage. It's a ten million dollar project, so with those tax credits, that's four million dollars. So if we were to approve anything that included demolition, and they lost their four million dollar tax credits, you would think you're going to get a developer to come to this town to do anything when we treat somebody that way. I mean, that's, it's completely wrong to even consider going down that path. And so, to that end, I'm trying to get the point across that you need to stop raising this cloud of possible demolition. It's not on the table. It's not in the master plan, and there's no, it's not happening according to the agreements that we've made. There were some other things said in these that I'll leave at that point, but that's the case as it stands today.
Do those tax credits expire at some point? When is that?
It's fifteen years total, right?
No, no.
But that's the...
No.
No.
Your Honor, Councilmember Ruffer, it's five-year look back on historic tax credits, and then the fifteen-year ad valorem tax exemption, I think, is what Bill's referring to.
But that, what I was referring to isn't not tied to the National Register.
Correct.
That's just...
The five-year, the five-year window. So essentially, when the project is complete, the clock starts, and then five, five years has, has to elapse before they can alter, the character of the historic building can be altered in any way. So if, say, we demolish something five years and one day after the, their project started, or ended or whatever, then they're not on the hook for that? Yeah, that, I mean, that's accurate. Yeah. I mean, and all, all due respect, I just, you know, like with what Councilmember Hicks was saying, the sheer cost of doing anything with that building is so high that...
So high. And yet, I'm aware of two developers who are just waiting for us to get this done so that they can step in. And, you know, if we're not going to put the money into fixing the roofs and stuff, and if the tax credits go away, and everybody keeps talking about demolition, those guys aren't coming to the table. But they will, if we can just get past this and get this money into the roofs and into the water and stuff, we'll see something. But there can't be any real work done to do that until we get past this.
We got to be careful about identifying future people that we may be benefiting.
Hence, my reluctance to bring it up.
I know, I know, I know. But we got to be careful about that because the, the whole tax credit, not tax credit, the whole
The bond issues, yeah.
Bond issues is, is that we're not doing this in anticipation of a, of a known developer. So we, let's not, let's not identify.
So I'm not going to go any further with that, but there, there, there are things out there that you just got to stop talking about demolition. It's not on the table.
Well, I think it was noted, too, that these dollars can't be used for that. So I think...
Money can't be used for that anyway.
Right. And, and point of...
If you want to bring it up five years and a day from now, then, well, let's wait till then.
None of the proposals that StanTech has submitted this year say anything about any demolition. None of our proposals do that. The direction we received was doing exterior stabilization, basically mothballing the existing buildings. So I want to make sure that you're not looking at me like I'm the bad guy, saying we're doing demolition, because that's not been in any proposal that we have submitted for this phase three work.
Correct. And just to verify that, again, it's stated a third time, the money that we have received, it states that they cannot be used for that. So I think it's duly noted. We had a great conversation on this tonight, and I think coming back with, you know, all the things that were originally laid out before the school got involved, it was great that we went down that path, and it's not going to work for them, obviously, which is okay. And so I think as a council, then, we need to get some refreshed numbers, and we can make some decisions on what to do with the next steps. But again, those dollars can't be used for demolition because that does not allow in the language for the dollars we received. So.
I do got one comment to make.
Go ahead.
And this is directed with Scott. I brought up demolition, but you listened to the conversation earlier. I said, I don't want to see them torn down. And that's why I'm willing to seal up the roofs, seal up the windows, pretty much keep the buildings in a position where they can be redeveloped. I can't say, if I don't get reelected, what another councilman's going to do four years down the road or eight years down the road. It may be in the future. But what I'm saying is, let's just seal the buildings up. Because right now, just let alone with the concerts we're holding up there, there's been a lot going on up there now. And if we can keep the buildings up and keep them sealed at a minimal cost, because when I talked to Bill once before, he says, the major money that the city spends out of our original money is dealing with vandalism. And that is repairing doors, repairing windows, and everything else. And if we can seal that building up tight as a drum, that's even going to eliminate a lot of the expenses we have on maintaining that building. So let's just get it sealed up, make it look nice, keep the people out of it. Hopefully, and I've said it before, and I said it here tonight, I hope we get a developer for it. But I can't say what people are going to do down the road. I'm just worried about our liability. And if we can seal it up enough to keep it up for another 20 years, with very little money at all coming out of the city's pocket, so be it. But I always bring up the word demolition because it's always a possibility. We're not always all going to be sitting here in this table. I mean, four, four or five years ago, everybody was fighting over what we were going to do. And then we ended up getting a few people where things started getting done. Now, the back of that building now looks a hundred times better than it did six years ago. It's nice and open. We got concerts and everything else. We still got historic cracks credits on that building. If we keep it sealed up, we're not going to lose the historic tax credits. If we start making alterations, we might. So let's seal it up and hope and pray we find a developer. Until then, the liability... Until then, the liability's off the city, and we're going to keep more Mother Nature out of there, and the thing's going to last longer. I mean, I saw the one down in, pictures of the one over in Michigan, where the thing, the floors were collapsing and everything else. If we can keep the moisture out, we're not going to get to that point.
Very good points. I appreciate the conversation. It was very good from both sides of the spectrum, or all sides of the spectrum, as you will, if you wish. And Brian and Bruce, thanks for the update, and we'll have some more information coming for us to make some decisions in the next couple of weeks.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number six, resolution authorizing entering a contract with WSB and their subconsultant Moore Engineering for Strategic Planning Services. Clara.
Yes, as you all may recall, the city is going to be undertaking a strategic, strategic planning process. We have had a committee working on putting out an RFP, taking in the applications that came in through that RFP, and then doing some interviews, and we have settled on WSB to do the strategic planning process with us. WSB is going to be working with Moore Engineering here in town, so it'll be, it'll be a nice balance between a local firm and a firm from out of town who could come in and give us some really nice, high-level overviews of how to go about a strategic planning process. So I've included the not-to-exceed amount that they put into their budget for us, which is $22,500. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Ruffer and Mr. Hicks both served on the committee to do the interviewing, et cetera, so if you have questions about their, what they thought of it, maybe you could ask them that.
Thank you, Clara, for the update and the information. Anybody have any questions on this? I know we've talked quite a bit about strategic planning in the past, and I think we've...
I'm making that resolution.
Thank you.
And I'll just say thank you to Clara and the city staff for all the hard work they did on it. It's well done.
Any other comments? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That is approved. Item number I, I, presentation of claims in the amount of $926,584.80. And if you have any questions, I'll defer them to our finance director, Bill Sonmore.
Making motion to pay bills.
Thank you, Mr. Fish. We have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hagberg. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Item is approved. Item J, boards, committees, and department reports. Do not think we have anything before us this evening. Item K is reports from staff and administrative office, officers. We do not have any older unfinished business, and we do not have any new business. That went under the consent.
You're under new business? As we have Commissioner Rognes in the room, is it possible for you to talk a little bit about this aggregate tax that the county's proposing?
Are you prepared this evening to speak that, Mr. Rognes?
He's always prepared.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Hicks, and the rest of the council members. Tonight will be our first night of public hearing and public information on the aggregate tax. The tax, we'll spend quite a bit of time going through that tonight, but I can just give you an overview of what this type of tax is. First of all, it's, it's set up by the state of Minnesota, so you either make application to be a part of that initiative, or you elect not to, as we have been in months or years past. It's coming forward because we have some townships that would like to see a tax put on the aggregate sands and gravels that are removed from the pits, and there's various reasons for that. Some of it is, there is a state statute that says what portion goes to the county, what goes to the township, and what goes to a, a fund for cleanup or rejuvenation of the properties that have once been a gravel or sand aggregate pit. The tax then is, these, we have some townships that have asked for that, because they would be a benefactor of some of that. We have a lot of sand and gravel that leaves this county. It's a resource, it leaves the county, there's nothing for the county in that vein of thought. It doesn't leave any values there, other than the person that owned the gravel that sold it. And so that's a concern, and there's other aspects of this. Townships that buy gravel and have no gravel in their township to sell are probably going to be concerned about that, because they become a payee and not a receeedee or a receiver. And so there's, there's a lot of aspects on it, and I don't think the county's even in position to say tonight, or at this time, would say what, what our position's going to be on that. It's something that's being brought forward. Is there any specific questions that I can try and answer? I'm trying to give an overview.
No, I was more interested in an overview. I mean, do you know what, what sort of like level is the tax going to be? I mean, what, what the impact is, I mean, in terms of how many tons?
We have those, I don't have any of those in my.
Yeah, head, yeah.
Here.
Will they be at the?
Yeah, we'll have all that information tonight. Hey, I invite you all out, at Bigwood, at the Bigwood Event Center.
Seven o'clock. So 30 minutes.
We've been asked to, we've been given special invitation to use the Big Event Center. We appreciate that.
One question.
Yes.
So before this tax, when somebody buys gravel, they're paying a sales tax on that, right?
We wouldn't refer to it as a sales tax, as a county, no.
So if I were to just go down there and pick up a load of gravel, they wouldn't charge me a fee and then a sales tax on it?
Well, they would, no. I don't believe that's how it's billed out. I haven't.
Because I.
I haven't seen the buildings on, on gravel.
Well, I'm just wondering if, on a general thing, because if people are paying taxes just like they walk into Annie's Pour and they pay a sales tax on something, wouldn't this be like taxing it twice?
Good question.
Essentially, I think yes. The answer to your question.
So double dipping.
Yeah. It would be.
But the price generally you buy from a gravel pit is a price, or from a delivery, it's a delivered price. What other fees they have would be the, the sales process.
Like outside state limits, there wouldn't be a sales, you know, state limit sales tax wouldn't.
Yeah, but you still got a state sales tax.
Yeah.
In the county.
That is, you know, and then they're going to be adding on to the top of that.
Sounds like you got a meeting to do 10 and a half hour, Brent.
We can count on one person.
Thank you, Mr. Rognes.
Thanks, Lee.
I don't have any miscellaneous announcements. Yes, you may.
Oh, here we go.
Here we go. See, I really want to encourage, you know, our elected officers and our staff to the housing summit. We're moving into the east side of the town, of the county this, this year. It's a housing summit, and you'll learn a lot about the initiatives of the county, the city, and school districts that are, you know, involved in trying to build housing for our community. And we see community housing as important, and we, we have to have a place for someone to live if we want them to work here. And we're trying to fill the jobs, and we've just got to find places for people to live so that they can work here and enjoy the amenities of our community, so. It's April. What's it?
Seventh.
Seventh?
Seventh, Thursday.
Thursday, yes. Thumper Pond. There's a registration item in the county website, I know that.
You know where to find it, too, huh? Okay.
She'll help you. She'll do it for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. So miscellaneous announcements, April 13th, 7:00 AM, committee of the whole meeting. April 18th at 5:30, our next city council meeting. April 27th will be another committee of the whole meeting, and then tonight, 7:30 out at the Bigwood, there's seven, thank you. The county meeting, and then you just mentioned, for the viewers at home, if you didn't catch that, April 7th, at Thumper Pond's going to be the housing summit.
Your Honor, the tack, the aggregate tax meeting tonight, it'll be virtual at 7:00 PM a week from tonight on April 11th, if folks want to participate that way and can't make it this evening. I believe that information's on the county's website.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for all your input, and that meeting is adjourned.